Call is, Lamarrs City Council Regular Meeting to order Tuesday, December 17th, 2013. Could we have roll call, Bev?
Nelson?
Yes.
Knapp?
Yes.
Rex Linkel?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Burkey?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the agenda. Prior to getting started on our council meeting today, I'd like to have John Leonard please come up and, John, this is John's last council meeting. John has been with us about nine years, it'll be nine years, the first of January. John's done an outstanding job as a council member of this town, and we're gonna miss him. But on behalf of the city council, the city of Lamarrs, John, I'd like to present the certificate of appreciation to you, and I wanna wish you good luck.
Appreciate it.
Today, we have a couple hearings. The first one is the Iowa Three West Trail STP Enhancement Project. And at its November 26th meeting, 2013 special meeting, the council set this date and the time for a public comment on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs of the Iowa Three West Trail STPE project. At this time, I'm gonna open the hearing and ask for any written or oral objections or comments to the project or to adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs. The hearing is open. Do we have any comments, written or oral objections? Would you step up to the podium here, Bob? Is it your name and address?
Bob Schrader, 607th Street, Southeast Lamarrs. Is, is this the bridge you're talking about out here, the crossover?
Yes, sir.
Foolish, very foolish. I have lived here all my life. I've traveled that road hundreds of times and hundreds of times. I've seen one person walking, Ralph Gable. He walked from his place a mile out of town to the First National Bank every morning and turned around and went back. He crossed that bridge, he lived, he ninety-some years old, he never got hurt, he never got hit. If you put that in, you're speaking to the trailer court, you have to put up stoplights to slow the traffic down so they can cross the highway, which is ridiculous. So in my thinking, it's a waste of money, you might as well buy the R C, float it up to Floyd River, and put a casino out there at the same time, and amount to about the same thing.
Okay.
That's all I've got to say, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Bob. Are there any other, yeah, Pat?
Yeah, Pat Warner, 629 North Lynn Drive. I called a couple of the council people to talk about this. I'm kinda the same way. I mean, my kids rode that highway to go out to the Little League fields and never had accidents. The thing is, when this got switched to the other side, then I have some concerns about that, how much it's even gonna be used, because the way it's gonna be, my understanding built, then you're gonna have to kinda double back. And I can tell ya, as a kid, if I'm on a bike and the highway is empty, I'm going from point A to point B. And so I know that there was some monies, I thought, from my understanding, back in 2010 or something, that went into the architectural study of this, and I know talking people said, "We put this much money into it." But if it's not gonna be, which I don't think it'll be utilized that much, then I think the money is, could be used somewhere else and that. I think that the money, it'd be like if I went and bought a piece of land, built, was gonna build a house, dug a hole, all this water came up, well, I've spent this much to dig the hole, buy the land, but I'm not gonna put the house on it if it's not gonna be able to be used. So I mean, my theory is that I really don't think we should be spending the money on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments? Yes, sir.
My name's Terry Ferrex, 301 Fourth Street, Southwest Lamarrs. I was here a while back and talking about some damage to my property.
Hold on, this is, this is a different topic, this is a different subject. We're, we're out of hearing.
Okay.
In regard to a bridge, Terry.
Okay.
And if you wanna wait, and, and when you get to open discussion...
That's what I thought this was.
No, this is, this is, okay?
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Any other comments in regard to the hearing on the bridge? Written or oral objections, comments? Scott?
I had told Gary Iverson, he is the general manager of Iceman Home, that I would read his, his statement. "I am writing to let you know that we feel your proposed walking path west of town that would join Parkview Terrace Mobile Home Community would be a benefit to the residents. It would make it safer for anyone wishing to walk in that area and reduce the chances of an accident occurring." And it was signed by Gary Iverson, the general manager.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Any other comments?
I just have some information for ya. You already know my opinion. I did a little checking on the bridge, and if you measure from the guardrail to the end of the guardrail, which is the distance of basically kind of the funnel that people are in, people and vehicles together, it's 567 feet, so football field times two, almost. It's a 50 mile an hour speed limit on the bridge. The shoulder that is allowed for pedestrian traffic is 10 feet wide from the white line to the concrete barrier, and in the winter, that distance is reduced due to snow next to the concrete barrier. In 2012, the DOT traffic count was 3,900 vehicles a day. Of that 3,900, approximately 290 were trucks. So that was a year ago traffic count that came from the Department of Transportation in Sioux City. So that gives you a little bit of a snapshot on what's going on as far as traffic-wise on the bridge, bumping right up at 4,000 vehicles a day a year ago.
Okay, thank you, Stu. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'm gonna declare the hearing closed. And council members, questions?
As I said previously, I've had a number of contacts, all are against the project. I'm, I'm questioning it from more than one standpoint. One, I don't think the people are gonna use the bridge as much as it's anticipated. I think they're gonna use the bridge as they've used it in the past, across, using the highway bridge. And although we've already spent money on the project, that doesn't mean we need to continue to spend money on the project. Plus, I believe it's gonna be a maintenance issue down the line, and the city is also gonna have a lot of in-kind work yet to do that is not included in the project costs.
Okay, any other comments?
My, my opinion is, it is a public safety issue. I think it will get used because not everybody is going uptown from that location, west of the bridge, some of them are going south to Walmart. It's a closer route to the ballparks, actually. As far as the, the route itself, it will not require crossing the highway to get to the bridge. You'll go under the, the current highway bridge to get to the, to the rec trail bridge. So that eliminates the, the concern with people crossing the highway to get to use that bridge. So I believe it is a public safety issue. I think there's a lot of kids out there. I think traffic is going faster. I think traffic is growing. Stu's comments about the trucks, with the ethanol plants and such, being south of us, I know there's a lot of truck traffic that comes through from the east, goes out that direction. And I believe it's a good, good option for, for people to get to where they want to get to and be safe doing it.
Okay, John, any other questions?
I was just wondering if, John touched on it there, speaking to Bob's concern about kids crossing the highway, this does provide a way to cross the highway from the north side to the south side sub-level, correct? And that's included in this $205,000 estimate?
Correct.
That's the, is it the excavation portion, or it's just built in throughout the bid process here?
The, the work needed to do, the under, going underneath the highway bridge is already there.
Okay.
And I too wanna clarify that, and so I appreciate both of those last two comments. Based on the blogs that have been hitting the airwaves, there maybe is some confusion about that. Several comments made in that forum indicate that they think there's gonna be pedestrian traffic trying to cross perpendicular, cross the highway. That is not gonna be necessary, it's currently not necessarily on the east side. Anybody that has taken the trail, that's been under there for quite a while. The proposed, the, the set of plans that have been drafted for this expansion of the trail has one on the west side of the river. So after the project would be completed, there is a means to get pedestrians from the south side to the north side, or from the north side to the south side, on both sides of the river, east side and west side. And so I think there's a great deal of flexibility there of offering a safe route. Can, I can't comment on whether people will use it, 'cause that's in the future, but there, you, the city, would be giving a safe route in both cases, west side and east side of the river, from north side to south side of the highway.
And has that already been approved by the DOT?
Yes.
Okay, so that portion is already taken care of?
Yes.
And having done all the work we've done on it to this point, I can't believe that if, and Joe knows better on this than I do, but I can't believe that if we do not choose to do this, we are not going to have, have an easier chance on any liability issue that should happen to pop up as a result of the accident. It would make it more difficult, I would suspect, for, for us to, to walk, or stay out of something of that nature. I've commented before about decisions that past councils have made that have proved to look pretty good, and I think we're in that position. There's no reason to expect that the city won't continue to develop west. The state was nice enough to build a bypass and open up miles and miles of opportunities, and I think you'll see commercial development out there sometime in the next 10, 15 years. And that trail will continue on out to the, to the bypass. We spent roughly $300,000 to put a tunnel underneath the bypass to extend the trail on 100, I think it's 100th Street. And if you watch people on their bikes, they go through that tunnel, and they go out to Key, and a lot of them will turn and go north on Key and drive up to Highway 3 and come on back down into town. So it's not unrealistic to think that this is not gonna complete a loop at some time, and somebody will look back at the council and say, "You know, I, I don't, it was pretty good thinking." I think that's kinda what happened on Park Road out here, which you're out in Mahogany. That bridge was put in with a pedestrian crossway on that. Now we have North Greenview out there and hundreds of people living out there, and they have an opportunity to get into the trail system safely, get into town safely. And I think the people that live west in the trailer park at this time, and some, some other residents, should have the same opportunity for safe passage into our community, they're taxpayers also. Thank you.
And I just wanted to thank everybody who has contacted me. I'm actually at about 50/50 on people for and against, but one call of note was from a mother who said that she would make her children use the bridge if it were installed. And the children are young enough now that she can make them because she's with them. It'll, it would be interesting down the road, perhaps, you know, just forming that habit. But I, I want to thank everybody that has called on both sides, and, you know, they've, they've spent some time thinking on this as opposed to just spouting off, so.
And I'd agree with Delana's comment, thank you for the input.
Is there any other questions from the council members?
Motion to adopt and resolution 13 day 54 to adopt plans, specification, forms, contract, estimated cost for the Iowa Three West Trail STP Enhancement Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Two quick questions before we go.
You bet.
Okay, one, that 160 STP, is that guaranteed? I had that question come up from somebody.
Yes.
Okay, so the government can't back out on that?
Correct.
Okay.
You're under contract with the state.
Okay, so that 160 is guaranteed, and, second, just to clarify for the public, if the bid comes in much greater than we're anticipating at the 205, there is still a chance to reject all bids?
Absolutely.
At that point?
And it solely rests with you, the city council.
Yep.
The state will not require you to award. That's your decision.
I just wanted to get those two items out there for the public so that those questions were answered. Okay, yes.
Mayor? It does, I wanna make sure it's understood, it does get bid at the state level. It gets bid at DOT Ames Iowa Office of Contracts is who sends it out and requests bids and receives bids and analyzes those bids and furnishes them to the city. And the reason that all occurs, these are actual federal dollars that are simply administered by the state, and FHWA requires the DOT to do so. So anyway, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, if they find out that it's getting bid down at the state level, it gets bid there, but you, five council, is who makes the decision.
On whether or not we accept the bids.
On February 4th.
And that would, yes, on February 4th.
I'm gonna read that in a minute here, once the, once you're...
Okay.
Okay, motion made in second, adopting resolution number 13 dash 54 to adopt plans, specifications, the form of contract, the estimated costs for the Iowa Three West Trail STP Enhancement Project. Can we have a roll call on that, Bev?
Knapp?
Yes.
Rex Linkel?
No.
Burkey?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Motion passed. I will say this, that the remaining schedule is, on that project, is a bid letting by the Iowa DOT, as Scott mentioned, in Ames, is on January 22nd, 2014. The award to construction contract is February 4th, 2014 meeting. The beginning construction date, late start, is May 27th, 2014, and the end construction date is 30 working days. The financial impact to this project is the grant is 80%, up to a maximum of $160,000 of construction. The local is 20% of construction, plus 100% of the engineering and wetland migration, and the city should be funded through Lamarrs Urban Renewal, or the Joint Urban Renewal, or the TIF revenue is where the money be coming from. Motion passed. Okay, thank you, everybody, for being involved in this. Moving on to the next one is, hearing is to vacate access easement. This is the date and time the council established for a public hearing on the proposal to vacate the access easement through the Cecil Yoder's Farmstead now that the new access road for the new wastewater treatment plant is constructed and optimal. The city will still need to do some cleanup work on the existing access road this spring, so final paperwork will follow completion, which should be done on or before May 15th, 2014. At this time, I'm gonna open the hearing and ask if there's any written or oral objections to this proposal. I will once again ask if there's any written or oral objections in this hearing to this If not, I'm gonna declare the hearing closed, and I would entertain a motion with somebody...
Motion to vacate an existing access easement on Yoder's property effective on or before May 15th, 2014, subject to performing required cleanup work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second to vacate an existing access easement on the Yoder's property effective on or before May 15th, 2014, subject to performing cleanup work. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go into general discussion, and, um... Yeah, I'm gonna have the citizens, and on our general discussion program, we ask you to step up to the mic and state your name and address. The council can't make any decisions today, but they're always very interested to listen to your comments and, and sincere about it. So at this time, I, I see Judge Neri and Don Nor, and I wanna, I share with the folks at home, the city of Lamarrs has always been a contributor to the Plymouth County Drug Court, and it's always nice to have Don and, and the judge here to update us as to where the dollars are and where they're at in the program. So at this time, either John or, or, or Don or Judge?
I brought along the big guns this morning.
(laughter)
I'd like to have some backup. I've got some information here that I will share with you, I'll give you some information on Drug Court, where the dollars are going, and what the effectiveness of our program is. I wanna take this opportunity to thank you again. My name is Don Norrie, I'm the coordinator for Plymouth County Drug Court Program. Judge Neri was kind enough to be in town today, and he wanted to come along. I know, Mr. Mayor, that the judge has forwarded or passed along a letter thanking you and the city council for the support that you give to our program. I initially had come here with the intention of asking for money, but the city had already taken action to approve it, so now I'm here to thank the city for the support that you give to our program. We're somewhat unique in, in the fact that we run a community program versus a judicial-led, and by judicial-led, the dependents or the, the individuals would be coming before the judge, individuals that would be in attendance might be the, the judge, the attorneys, any treatment providers, but under a community program, it's the citizens and the volunteers that sit on those panels that really hold our individuals accountable. And in most instances, the individuals that come before the Drug Court are more afraid of us than they are appearing before the judge or any, any of the police officers, because it's their peers that are holding them accountable. And to them, that's the one thing that they may have never had before, was the accountability factor. But the information that I've given to you, we like to say that we operate on a pizza and pot budget. It costs us on average about $220 a month to run our program, and that, basically, that money is used by Drug Court coins for those that graduate, the graduation cakes, the pizza and the pot that we provide to our volunteers. We have three panels that go on the second, third, and fourth Wednesdays of every month, average caseload that may become before the Drug Court panels. We'll have juveniles go first. Those vary in numbers that, that may appear, but on the adult side, we, we probably have anywhere between eight to 10 individuals that will come every Wednesday night. And so it's, you know, we like to think that Lamarrs doesn't have a drug problem, but we're, we're the same as any community in, in the state of Iowa or in the United States. The information that I've given you is the total number of individuals that have been referred to our program since we started six years ago. We've had 161 enter, enter the program voluntarily. It's a volunteer program. Benefit is that with our program, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to maintain the social structure or the family structure. These individuals are not sitting in jail, they're not burning up the tax dollars because it can get rather expensive to sit out at the, at the law enforcement center on a monthly basis. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to teach individuals that you got yourself here, it's only you can get yourself out of it, and we hold them accountable. We work with them, and after a period of time, you start to develop a rapport and a, a level of trust with those individuals, and you do take it to heart. It, it is, it is a program that you wanna see them succeed, and when they fail, it, it just tears you up. But we can't do it for them. What we can do is use our experiences, our previous past histories, things that we went through way back when, and use some of those to kinda help lead and guide them. As you can see, it takes a little over a year to complete our program if you do everything right. The longest individual that we had in the program was 896 years, or days, years. It felt like it with this guy. So that's two years, five months, and 16 days, you know? Sometimes you feel like, you know, giving up on them, but we'll never give up on somebody. If they give up on themselves, that's a different story, but we will never give up on an individual. Judge, do you have anything you wanna say?
I can't give up the chance to say so. (laughter) I'm a man of few words, as you have. But I, I, here's what I wanna say so you understand. Your investment is going to make a significant difference in people's lives, that I see. I wanna share with you, 'cause I told the mayor this, and this is important. I was in Des Moines about two years ago as part of a public safety advisory board, which I'm a member of, and we had a discussion about Drug Courts and how effective they were. And one of the comments made by, I think a Let's Slave staff member said, "Yes, but they're very expensive, 'cause not everybody can afford to do these things." And I said, "Just hold on just a second." He said, "I have a Drug Court in Plymouth County that has existed on $5,000 for over two years." And I said, "It's because we have people who invest of themselves and make a huge difference in the lives of others." And that's what's going on here in that respect, we're rare. It is making a difference in people's lives, we are turning non-productive people into productive people. Every one of us, in some way or another, has had addiction affect our lives, either directly or indirectly, and you know how difficult it can be. When we change people's behaviors, the way they live, the way they think, and what they have in terms of prospects with the rest of their lives, we've changed them forever. And Drug Court does that, and I can't thank enough the people who have volunteered their personal time. And if you really wanna know how good the program is, y'all know Larry Peterson, ask Larry, and Larry will, you know, set aside some time, 'cause Larry will tell you how good it's going, and he'll talk to you for a long time, but Larry is one of our best judges, basically, he gets to be a judge, and he's one of our best cheerleaders. Every time I see him, he thanks me. I don't need to, you don't need to thank me, Larry, you're doing the hard work, and I just supervise. So thank you for your investment, I appreciate it.
Do you have any questions that I could try to answer? If not, I would, you know, welcome or invite the council at any time that you would like to come in and sit in and observe one of the sessions, please contact me. There's some, of course, paperwork that we have to go through as far as confidentiality and those types of issues, but we would always welcome a mayor or city council to come and sit in and observe the, the process, because I, I do think that it is an opening experience, especially if you, you plan it right and get there on a graduation night. That's probably, for us, that's, that's probably the, the proudest thing that we do, and I know a lot of times, there's tears and hugs that are shared. But with that, I, again, I just wanna say thank you to the city of Lamarrs for the support of, of our program, so thank you.
Thank you, Don, for, and Judge, for what you're doing out there, and particularly all your volunteers that are involved in this program. I think you citizens can see here in Lamarrs that the money that we're appropriating for this program is, is awfully important, it's going a long ways. I do need to share with you a letter that I did receive from Judge Neri, and I'm gonna take the time to read it because I feel it's important. Mayor and council members, your honorable mayor and council members of the city, Lamarrs City Council, I was very pleased to hear the news recently from Don Nor, our part-time Plymouth County Drug Director, of Lamarrs' decision to make a significant financial contribution to our efforts to continue to provide Drug Court services to the people of Plymouth County. Let me assure you and confirm that Don may have already told you about the Plymouth County Drug Court. Drug Court works. It has made a difference in people's lives, changing the way they behave, thinking about themselves, and how they contribute to the communities. Because of your willingness to support this effort, it will continue to make a real difference. You can be assured, you can be sure that your investment will be used in the most efficient way possible. We pride ourselves on the limited funds that Drug Court needs to function each year, and you should know that it is due in large part to dedicated group of volunteers who give themselves to serve as a panel of judges without compensation. As you can imagine, I go on considerably about the virtues of the Drug Court, as I am a believer... am a believer and one of the most visible cheerleaders. I am not alone, however, and any one of our community panel judges will express the same support of the program. So let me say thank you personally, on behalf of all the people who serve the Plymouth County Drug Court, and for those who will be served by Drug Court for your gracious contribution and support of our efforts. It is also our desire to educate folks about Plymouth County Drug Court. As such, if you or any one of you might encounter would like to, like a speaker or just further information on our Drug Court, please do not hesitate to contact me, and we will be happy to make appropriate arrangements to share the information. Once again, thank you for your financial contribution and support. Judge Jeffrey Neary. Thank you very kindly, gentlemen, and we're well aware it's going to a good council. I'll see that you guys get copies of this. Okay, Terry, would you, you want to, Joe?
Hello, folks. Terry Ferriks, 301 Fourth Street, Southwest. I just kind of come to get an update on a discussion that me and Mr. Langle had a few weeks ago, had come to any decision about how to fix our problem, the water in my basement?
We're going to be discussing that with the city council yet today.
Okay.
In close session.
I just had some time. I was in town. I'm kind of in a hurry right now. I'll see you guys in a couple, two, three, four weeks.
Okay. Thanks, Terry. Get out. Any other discussion? Okay, if not, thumbs up over there. John?
Nothing, Your Honor.
John Leonard?
I'll add my thumbs up to the Plymouth County Drug Court and the folks that were here representing them and all the volunteers that work with that program. I'm one of the individuals that is aware it's there, and, but every year, it's good to have the reminder of how it works and how it helps people. And that's one of the things that makes LaMars and Plymouth County the place that folks want to, want to work and live in and be a part of. So my thumbs up to those folks for doing what they do.
Delana?
A thumbs up for the Christmas spirit seen out at the fairgrounds. If you've braved the cold either of the last couple of weekends, they have quite the display in Pioneer Village and the Round Barn, and also a big thank you to the entertainers who have been performing in Century Hall. It's a little step back in time as you wander down Pioneer Village and the lights glistening around you and fire department down there at the end guarding their fire pits, making sure that everything is safe and warm. So thank you to everybody involved with that. It's a wonderful family experience.
Hey, you strolled under my age. Boy brings back memories. Rex?
Well, I was just going to be a little bit more general. I figured it's the Christmas season, so I'm going to give it up to all the volunteers, whether it's out at the Pioneer Village, whether it's Main Street, whether it's LaMars Business Initiative, whether it's John Leonard, whether it's other people that are involved in planning and zoning and other committees we got the city. You give up your time. You sometimes get in trouble or potentially ridiculed for doing it, and it's hats off to all those folks because it is somewhat of an effort.
Okay, I agree. Thanks, Rex. Ken?
Nothing today. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We're going to the consent items, and today we've got five of them. The first one is approval of December 3, 2013, regular meeting minutes. Number two is a list of bills for performing ending 2013, or 12 of 2013, 13. Monthly financial statement for November 2013. A mayor council staff assignments for 2014, and the renewal of the liquor license, beer permit at Four Brothers Bar and Grill and the pizza hut. All the items listed on the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items unless a request is made prior to the time the council votes on the motion. Does any of the council members have any, one of these questions?
Does this mean we approve the assignments of more committees that we're on?
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
We're trying to cut down on those committees.
Well, I understand why. There's still a couple pages.
Oh, I know.
I'll make the motion on that.
That's what I was thinking. That's what I was. The question is, are we going to get a second? Thanks a lot, John. You're performing real well at your last meeting.
I'll bow when I can.
Any other questions?
If we have a motion, I'll second.
Motion to approve consent items, one through five.
Motion made and second to approve the consent items, one through five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Just want to give people something to back up on YouTube and see what happened. I can play it again. I'm sure we'll watch it next time. Action items. E1, rail consulting agreement. Attached is a consulting agreement between the International Trade and Transportation Strategies, which is the Iowa LLC, ITTS, and city of assistance, for assistance to develop a business plan, funding sources, and implementation, implement phase developments as identified in the city rail development master plan, and it costed $10,000. Additional information discussion will be held at this meeting. Scott, you want to comment on that, what we're, what we're working on there?
This is with Bill Hooton, and you've heard his name before on a couple of different fronts. Bill assisted NWID, Northwest Iowa Development, with applying for a status called Foreign Trade Zone. That has been accomplished. He continues to be contracted with the NWID in terms of ongoing processes that they have for that whole procedure. We hired him, if you recall, you did, to work with a marketing plan, and we did get that, and that got incorporated in the master plan of the rail. So he worked closely with our committee. He worked closely with JEO, and if you recall, we hired JEO and a subconsultant called Via Rail. And they did perform on the master plan that was fully put together, and it was submitted to the Canadian National folks in Chicago. We're still waiting for a formal review and approval by Canadian National on that document. However, it did get submitted, and Bill had input there. Bill comes to us from a couple of different sources. Number one, he has connections in Washington, DC, and then he also has connections with the firm Riverport Railroad. And he has offered on countless events some really good advice as to how we should conduct ourselves in this rail business and who to talk to. He's brought a number of leads to us on the marketing side. We feel that it's, it's good to have him as a consultant on our team as we continue forward into the future, trying to fully develop and to expand the rail service to our industrial park. And for that reason, I guess, the committee recommends, Dick did call a committee meeting, and we had that committee meeting, and they are in support, and they make recommendation to you that we continue this relationship with Bill Hooton. I personally recommend it as well with all my dealings with Bill. He's been excellent to work for or with.
One thing that, I don't know who the council members were brought to date on, but we've been working on a foreign trade zone, or he has, through Neil and this Northwest Iowa Development Group. And we were awarded that, was it two weeks ago Friday, I believe it was? The foreign trade zone number is 288. So it's a done deal, which shows we're moving ahead on these projects. Another thing that I think that LaMars really has to take a look at is the fact that we're one of the magnet sites in this foreign trade zone as far as future growth. And so I think, all in all, Bill has been a real asset to us.
And then just some clarification on the contract. It indicates that we would be hiring ITTS to consult with the city to help fund, market, and implement the master plan. Implement is pretty much a given. I mean, master plan is in place, implement is making it work. What exactly would ITTS be helping to market? And when it's talking about funding, are there grants or something that they would be writing? And if so, would that all fall within that $10,000 cap?
I think New York is in a position to answer those questions, Delana, and those are very good questions.
I'm in that position only because I'm standing at the podium right now, I think. I walked up to merely echo what Scott and the mayor had said. I've worked with Mr. Hooton for about two years now, and he is an individual who certainly has come through on everything that he said he would do. And as Scott said, he has on numerous occasions brought us advice without us even searching it out necessarily and given us direction as to how to approach things. So I think he's been invaluable to us. And that's why Northwest Iowa Development has also determined that we need to continue contracting with him as we move forward in the future. In regards to your question, Delana, yes, there are funds that may possibly be available. As I think Scott and the mayor have probably said numerous times in the past, we are really kind of newbies in the railroad business, and the further we get into it, the more we learn and learn that we didn't know beforehand. And we need individuals that can guide us and walk us through those directions as we continue to move forward. So there are funds, there are funds available that we would not be aware of probably through the federal government possibilities, depending on what direction we determine to go with the railroad and the city decides to go, obviously. As far as marketing goes, as Scott mentioned, he has brought forward a couple of different prospects already. Companies that may be able to utilize especially the foreign trade zone, which again in itself becomes a very complicated issue, understanding which businesses that best functions for and how best they can make that work for them. So his knowledge there is extremely beneficial to us also.
So with the funds, he wouldn't actually do the grant writing? He would just point to the funds, and then it's up to us to hire somebody else to go after the money, or?
Um, I guess, I don't know.
I'm just wondering how many levels of funding there are in this.
He would assist us with applying because he would probably help us with the wordsmithing that is needed because he's been down that path already. And as you, I think, all know, obtaining a grant is pretty much a direct parallel with how well you write that narrative on what your needs are and what you're going to be using the grant funds for. And so I think that's where Bill's strongest suit would be for us, is helping us put those words together correctly and accurately so that we can go after the funds. One of the sources is the state of Iowa DOT, but another major source could be for us the FRA, and that's the Federal Rail Administration at the national level. And there will be some additional things coming in front of you in that regard, both from a consultant basis, that we need some other people hired to help us get declared, what we need to be declared on this rail line so that we become fully eligible for the federal funds.
Yeah, a huge part of the contract, what he brings to us is his experience, past experience.
Yeah.
Probably the best way I could say it is truly for especially large grants, it kind of takes a village to do that. It takes a wide array of people to put that together, much like with the foreign trade zone application. You know, there were many participants involved in that process, but it does take someone, as Scott said, who actually fully understands what that question is asking and how you word it back to them to make it make the most sense. And that was what he provided to us for that foreign trade zone application. I think it'd be the same way in funding.
And then how much involvement do other entities that we work with? Neil had mentioned the Northwest Iowa Development Corp. I don't know if it's something Simcoe can get involved in, you know, if there are grant opportunities. How much involvement do we have from other entities?
Well, I'd say yes and yes for both of the ones that you just mentioned. And Neil, could you recite exactly how that was hired and who paid for the designation as foreign trade zone? That all came through NWID.
Yes.
Even though Bill Hooton worked on it, somebody had to hire him, and it was done on a six-county basis, not just LaMars.
Right.
Correct. Yes, that is correct. We as an organization, the organization itself hired Mr. Hooton, applied for the foreign trade zone in a six-county region that now has a grant.
And we, and we are a member of NWID, so that's how we formed this relationship with Mr. Hooton to this point.
Yes, that is correct. Actually, we kind of, I had gotten to know him a little bit prior to and introduced him to NWID because it was a route that several of us had been thinking about for a couple of years to open up more avenues for us for marketing and economic development.
It's just sometimes these things get drawn out so far down the line that people forget how it started or where it began. So I think it's just good to kind of clarify.
And another comment, I guess I would have on our local COG, and Simcoe is our COG, Council of Government. And I would say, without exception that I know of, whether you're talking state level, foundation level, or federal level, having a COG involved with you, partner to partner, if you will, on writing grant applications is invaluable. And those organizations typically look at it that when a COG gets involved, they're representing a broader region, and that's why they look more favorable on it.
I think that we're in the foreign trade zone now, and I can't imagine dealing without Bill because when people come forward and want to know what that means, how they could work, he can sit down with an industry and tell them what savings they could anticipate. I think he's that professional person that is up there and understands the whole picture instead of just the little pieces. I don't think we're qualified. I don't think Northwest Iowa is qualified. I think we really need somebody like that to handle that really important issue.
Just to give 60 seconds on what Ken just stated, Northwest Iowa Development will be hiring an individual who will handle the paperwork, all the reporting that's in regulations that are needed to be kept for the federal government because we are now an agency within the federal government as a foreign trade zone. And Ken is absolutely right. One of the reasons why we've continued to contract with him is one of the first things he'll be doing is giving a tutorial, if you will, an educational session to all developers within the six-county region so that we can at least do the cursory information getting with companies to sit down and talk with them. But we'll probably still need him on the backside to do the real in-depth analysis for companies to make sure that it does make sense for them to function within a foreign trade zone. So you're absolutely right.
And the key there with Northwest Iowa Development is hiring somebody. So we don't have a lot of extra paperwork on our staff level then?
No, no, not here. It'll be through one individual handles it for the six-county region.
See, I pick up on those money things.
And that's why I put them out there for you.
I think I'm going to add a little bit just to Delana's comments, if she'll be okay with it. I think our problem is that, is that we keep seeing consultant agreements and different people with different consultant agreements, and we say we're moving along, and we say we're doing this, and we don't know how far down the road we are. We don't know if we're 30% down the road to getting this thing figured out, or if we're 10% down the road, or if we're 80% down the road. Because when you see the agreements and you see what the result is, yes, we got results, we've got names, we've got banners, we've got all this stuff. You know, I'm the money guy at the end that wants to see some revenue coming in, either through the rail or through new businesses or whatever. And I think this is all getting to that point, but it's kind of hard when I read my consultant report in my council action to figure that out. Okay? And that's, that's just an editorial. That's not a comment. It's just that sometime we want to figure out how far down we are, and maybe even the next time we get one, we just need a little timeline that says, this is the guy that did this, this is the guy that did this, like we did with that, so we can see where we are today. Because I think we've taken seven or eight votes related to the rail, just like I think we've taken six votes related to the bridge. You know, it's a long process, and each one of them makes sense. I think this one makes sense because this is the guy that knows what's going on, but I don't know how it makes sense if you bring another one to me next week that says $100,000. I don't know if that makes sense. I just want to know where we are in the game. Okay?
Yeah, I, I'll comment if I could to that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Comment. I think the end game is that we find ourselves owning a rail line. And if you want to make that rail line the biggest and best it can be for the benefit of LaMars and surrounding area of Plymouth County, then I think- then I think what you're approving today and what we're going to ask you in not-too-distant future to further approve is contracts that will bring that end game to you.
Okay.
Which is increased revenues based on that asset of a rail. And more importantly really than revenue and revenue, I don't mean to demean revenue at all, but more important to the revenue is increased industrial growth for our area.
Yep, that's what I was hoping you were going to say, but I just want to know where we are in the game.
From my perspective, that's the only reason we're going down this path.
Okay.
Is for increased industrial growth in our industrial part as a result of us jumping in with both feet into the rail business.
Okay.
And maintenance of the facilities that we have, the rail facilities that we do have.
And I just want to, this is a big kettle of fish.
Really?
And it ain't going to happen overnight. But I do want to share with you that we're crawling before we walk on this thing. And the people that we're dealing with, we're in the process of checking them out 100%. Am I right, Scott? And I think not too near future down the road here that we'll be able to give you the information of what you're asking for.
Well, I just want to, you know, because if it's a council person, you sit there and look at the agreement, there's not a whole lot of meat here. I think that's what kind of Delana was asking.
Yeah, I understand.
Is there not a whole lot of meat? And, you know, I'm not exactly a fan of engineers and architects. So when I sit there and look at this, I'm not, I don't have a whole lot of love for a nice two-page agreement, especially when the agreement wants five grand upfront, you know, out of 10 grand. But, you know, that doesn't happen in my world either. So that's why I ask. I appreciate, I actually appreciate both of your comments because that's what I was hoping you were going to say. But I don't think we've said that enough.
And it's good, it's good that we keep right on going like we are, you know? And we'll keep abreast.
Okay. I'd make a motion approving the consulting agreement with ITTS for assistance with Lamar's rail master plan at a retainer cost of $5,000 and maximum not to exceed cost of $10,000.
Is there a second?
So moved.
Motion made in second approving or denying, approving, excuse me, the consulting agreement with the ITTS for assistance with Lamar's rail master plan at a retainer cost of $5,000 and a maximum not to exceed a cost of $10,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the water system improvements. On November 19th, 2013, the contracts were awarded for the water system improvements, 2012 water tower and booster station. Proposed remaining schedule was a bid letting June 26, 2013. The booster station was June 26, 2013. Award of the contract was November 19th, 2013. And the booster station was 2013. The pre-construction conference is set for January 2014 for both the water tower and the booster station. The begin construction is set for January 2014. And the booster station, 2014. The final completion date is July 2015 for the water tower and December 2014 for the booster station. McClure Engineering is here and is recommending that the, did I say McClure? Yeah, they aren't here, are they?
No.
Okay, Scott, you want to bring them up to date on that and where we're at with that?
We have the contracts, bonds, and insurance back. And Bev's got those from both companies, Caldwell as well as Rice Lake. And as the mayor read to you the dates, all those are applicable. The January of 2014 dates, there's four of them on your page. That's really January 9th, to be exact now, that has been established. The final completion, I need some correction here. The July of 15 for the water tower is actually August 1st of 2015 with the final closeout paperwork by September 15th of 2015. And for the booster station, which is with Rice Lake, that one is December, but it's the 15th of December of '14 with the final closeout paperwork by May 15th of '15. And so the contract change orders that you have before you reflect those dates. And I wanted to make sure that if there was any questions regarding that, the reason the dates got pushed back from the contract documents that were bid on is because of the delay that FAA caused because of the aviation declaration that they had made. And so these now reflect the negotiated completion dates following the conclusion of FAA on that water tower. And if you recall, we did not award either contract pending the results of FAA. So.
And we're not going to run out of water and our bond cost is not going to be higher by delaying it?
Bond counsel, I'll take the last one first. Bond counsel shouldn't be higher because that's already been completed and it's in the bank, so to speak.
That's what I was thinking, but I didn't know if that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
The contracts are what they are and both companies honored what they bid. So although there was a delay in our award and a delay in startup and therefore a delay in finishing, the prices stayed the same to you, the city.
Any other questions? Do you entertain a motion?
Motion approving change order number one to the contract for the water system improvement, 2012 water tower with Caldwell tanks.
Is there a second?
So moved.
Motion made in second approving change order number one to the contract for the water system improvements, 2012 water tower with Cadwell tanks incorporated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
Motion approving change order number one to the contract for the water system improvements, 2012 booster station with Rice Lake construction.
Is there a second?
So moved.
Motion made in second approving change order number one to the contract for the water system improvements, 2012 booster station with Rice Lake construction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Okay, moving on. Number three, the CDVG downtown revitalization consulting contract. We're going to scratch that today. We had a meeting on that yesterday, right, Scott? And we are working with the contractors on that. But why don't you fill us in just to?
Yeah, we did take, well, two things. We had a date for, a deadline for the submission of an AEE proposal, which was a week ago yesterday, that could not be accepted because only two submitted. And the federal government through HUD requires a minimum of three. And we only got two. We therefore, through Simcoe, who is administering our program here, they extended it one week. And instead of receiving it a week ago yesterday, we just received it yesterday. We did review it for a couple hours yesterday afternoon. The committee that reviewed that has decided to interview two of the firms to kind of break.
So you did get three then?
We got four.
You got four.
I'm sorry, that's a good punchline to give out there. Instead of getting two, we got a total of four. We reviewed all four. We set up interviews for tomorrow afternoon. So we need to delay this until your next meeting pending the results of that, the interviewing of the two AEE firms.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any questions on that? Okay. The next one is the E4, is the LBIC loan. In October 2010, Lamar's Business Initiative Cooperative, LBIC, made an economic development loan to facilitate a new business locating in Lamar's. It has a five-year loan with only interest due each of the first two years. The amount of the loan was $100,000. In order to fund the loan, the LBIC borrowed a like amount, which like terms from a group of local banks. The company was able to make its first two annual interest payments, but were not able to pay the principal and interest payments that were due in October 2013. The LBIC has begun legal steps to collect the loan. At the LBIC meeting on December 12, 2013, it was passed to ask the city for a loan in the amount of $33,000 in order to stay current on this debt. The next principal and interest payments will not be until October 2014, which will give the LBIC the time to resolve this issue. And I'm going to turn it over. Neil, you want to visit on this just to deal?
Sure. For a number of years, the LBIC has had a working relationship with three banks in town that participate in loans to the LBIC. We have, I guess for lack of a better term, just kind of a line of credit with the banks, which is secured by land that the LBIC owns, which has an assessed valuation of just over half a million dollars. So over the past years, we've made numerous loans to businesses. Typically, these loans are a gap, fill a gap in the financing or to assist a business for either a new project or an expansion project or as a piece of incentive, if you will. If you recall in the past, many times we'd need to come up with some funding to support the community side of applications to the state of Iowa. And for the past 11, 12 years, everything's gone swimmingly. We've had a good batting record. And so everybody just smiled because the money just flowed through and there were no issues. We now have run into a loan that we made that appears to be going south. The company no longer exists. And our legal counsel has taken the steps to start legal proceedings to see what we can do to rectify that situation. The banks aren't looking to be in the land business. And at this point in time, the LBIC does not have the ability to make the payment, to make it current at this time. So thus, the motion at LBIC last week to come before the city council.
Questions for Neil?
How does the five-year loan become $33,000 for one year short?
Originally, it was structured to be interest only the first year and then principal and interest for the next four years. At the end of the first year, the company requested and we talked about it and decided to give them another year, a jumpstart potentially, that we amend that agreement to make it two years, interest only, and then principal and interest, the remaining three years. And the banks agreed with that. And so thus, this year was interest payment, which the LBIC did make to keep that portion of it current with the banks. But then that breaks it down to about $33,000 a year, each of those three years.
But essentially, the full $100,000 is on the hook right now.
That's correct, yes. Next payment is due a year from now in October.
So the 33 is just to get us through, hopefully.
Brings it current.
The process during the next year would resolve the full balance, preferably, but.
Yes, that's correct. That will be our goal, obviously.
I'd make a motion approving a loan to the LBIC in the amount of $33,000 with terms to be worked out by staff and legal. And it will be funded by the Economic Development Fund.
Second motion?
Motion made in second approving a loan to the LBIC in the amount of $33,000 with the terms to be worked out by staff and legal. All those in favor say aye.
Good question. So essentially, if it's funded from the Economic Development Fund and the resolution, I assume banks are paid back first. So we lend this $33,000 to pay 33 of the $100,000 down on the loan. If the collection or resolution comes back at $66,000, the bank gets that and economic development is $33,000 in the hole.
Have we been addressed that yet?
Well, yeah, if you're looking at it, all to happen at one point in time.
Well, because typically in collections, you can send the full $100,000 plus whatever interest in. But then, you know, there's fees and everything else involved. Typically, the full amount that is received back to the entity who is owed money, in this case, the banks and now I would assume secondary the city if this motion is approved. Or LBIC. If it's not, then the bank has top tier in hierarchy, I would imagine.
Well, the other piece to the resolution of this situation is to sell additional land in the business park, which is the land that the LBIC owns, which will give them the opportunity to square up with the banks also.
Okay.
And I really don't think the 33 is going to go to economic development expense yet. But it could if we don't get our money.
Correct. Well, that's where temporarily it would be funded.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not going to be an expense on our budget or whatever.
Oh, I thought the bank wanted the 33,000.
No, but it's going to be receivable.
Yeah, it'll show as receivable.
We're not going to show it as an expense.
But the money is gone.
The money is gone.
Once the money's gone, I don't care how you show it, the money is gone.
No, it does make a difference because at that time, if he comes back in and has $20,000 of 33, we can elect to put it to any fund at that time. We could put it to a local office, we could put it to economic development, we can put it to a TAF or property tax, depending on where the property is and everything. So there's still a council going to make the directive on what to expend it when it becomes an expense. Right now, we're making basically a loan, which is totally on the fund statement.
We'll still track the receivable at this time through economic development.
That's what, we'll track it. We'll track it as a receivable, yes. Just wanted to be clear.
Is that it, your question?
If it is a bad debt, then you would probably fund it out of one of the two urban renewal tips.
That's what I was thinking.
But at that point, we can certify it as debt. Because if it's receivable, then we don't need to certify it as debt right now.
So down the road, then it wouldn't have to stay as debt in the economic development. It could be pulled from one of the other two.
Correct.
That's my point. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, there's a motion second on the table approving a loan to the LBIC in the amount of $33,000 with terms to be worked out between staff and legal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, number five under the action items is the amending Chapter 36 Fire Rescue Department. Fire Chief Dave Sheppers proposing to changes to Chapter 36, the Fire Rescue Department, attached as a proposal to changes and a copy of the amended ordinances. If you had a chance, I assume your council members, to look through the change on that. The Fire Rescue Department consists of one company, if not more than 35, it used to be 30 and there's 35 regular members now. And up to 10 reserves are persons of good moral character and good strong physical condition. And the other one, I believe, was the full-time, or the limits, wasn't it, Dave? In regard to how many miles?
Yeah, we're just trying to square up the residency thing a little bit. One part said 15 miles and another part said two miles. We just put that completely out there. We added five positions. We added from 30 to 35.
Yeah.
Motion approving the first reading ordinance number 917, amending Chapter 36 Fire Rescue Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion approving the first reading ordinance number 917, amending Chapter 36 Fire Rescue Department. Can we have a roll call on that, Dave?
Nelson?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to discussion. John?
Your honor.
John Leonard?
Yeah. Last time I get to do this, so.
How long is the list?
I've got an appointment at 2:40 for the dentist, so I won't take it any longer than that. This will be more painful than the dentist. I want to just let everybody know how honored I have been, first to represent the Ward 1, the citizens in Ward 1, and secondly, to be a member of the council up here and work with the entire staff of the city. It's been nine years of some very good, very good times and some that weren't quite so good. I want everybody to know out in the public how much I appreciate and I hope they appreciate the staff and the city employees and also the other council members that I've sat up here with. I respect every one of them tremendously. We didn't always agree on things, as evidenced on a bimonthly basis, I guess, or twice-a-month basis. But when we got all done with everything, even if the vote was split. basis, but when we got all done with everything, even if, if the vote was split, I think we all supported the decisions that were made. The decisions that we did make, at the time, the council sits here and does it, it's, it's not something that just happens within the hour or two or three that we're here. There's a lot of prior information that, that these people sit through and, and look at in committee meetings, and I think every one of them needs to be applauded for, for the efforts they make on behalf of the citizens. Nobody's in this for, for the money or the power or anything else. Everybody's here to benefit the city of La Mar's, and I think we've, we have. We've done a lot of good things over the nine years I've been involved. I fully expect there's gonna be a lot of more good things that will come, come forward here through the years. And I really do need to also applaud Clark Goodchild for running for office, not because he's taken me off the hook, but because I think it's important that every city election should be contested. I don't think it's good to, to have non-contested elections. And Clark has agreed to step forward and, and slip into this position, and I, I expect he'll do a fine job. He's gonna be my representative, so, so he'll hear from me as well, so. And I hope everybody, everybody in town contacts all the council people on things. I really can't say that, that I had a lot of problems with folks calling me and, and commenting on issues. I wish, I wish we would've had more. It's good to hear from the, from the citizens to know, know what the pulse is and, and know which way to go on things, but again, I just wanna thank everybody for the opportunities I've had here with the city and, and being involved, and, and just let you know that if, if there's ever anything else I can do and help with, I'll, I'll be willing to do it, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, John. We appreciate it. You're gonna be missed, and we appreciate what you've done, as I said before, for the city. We do have a nice town here, a nice city, and you've been a big part of helping it. Tanana?
Keep it short and sweet. Basically, want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, enjoy family and friends, stay safe, and ring in two thousand and fourteen. It's hard to believe we're almost there already.
What night's your party, am I invited?
Which, which one?
Rex?
I think it's time for Jason's annual, where are we supposed to push the snow report?
I realize we haven't had much of it, but I also realize that people want to put it in the street or on somebody else's property, and I think they're both no's on that.
All right, update. It did snow, yes, one or two or three times. Earlier this week, I believe, I sent out approximately forty-five to fifty friendly reminders of what the code is, so. And hopefully, Magdalene sitting here would put something in the paper as a reminder.
Sidewalks are to be cleared.
Forty-eight hours.
That's the easiest thing.
Snow, ice.
Sidewalks, forty-eight hours.
Uh, you, what else did you ask?
You're not supposed to push it in the snow.
No.
You're not supposed to push it across the street in somebody else's.
Not in the traveled way of the street.
Okay.
And not across the street. So.
And there are people that have been seen to do that-
Correct.
-this year. It's hard to believe, I know. It's just like the people that get into an accident when they have the first snow and they've been in Iowa all their life, but it does get slick when it snows, and you're not supposed to be an inconvenience to somebody else with your snow.
Yes.
Is that a fair statement?
So, yes, so as, that's a good reminder. Every change of season, as we go from grass-growing season to snow season, there's always a, a period where you seem to have to maybe remind citizens of what the codes are. So like I said, forty-five to fifty of those went out earlier to remind them.
I did check with Steve Hansen, there is no return to sender policy, so when the city fills in your driveway, you can't put it back in the street. I checked.
Thank you.
Anything else, Rex? Ken?
Only to say that I know Floyd Valley Hospital has sent out a lot of letters and asking for donations for the construction. I'd like to tell you what they did for me. They, they spent two and a half months getting the equipment here in town that enabled me to have an MRI with a pacemaker. I was blessed to get one of their early pacemakers, or one of the latest pacemakers that's MRI-proof, but none of the hospitals in the area would, would touch an MRI on me. Floyd Valley Hospital followed through and got the information, got certified, ran the equipment, and a week ago, eight people watched me get my MRI and everything went well. So it's, it's nice to know that the hospital is expanding, it's nice to know that those services are available, and when there's a unique problem, that they go to bat and solve the problem. I was real pleased, so.
Good. Scott?
I was gonna talk about three items. The CIP is not ready. On the list of fees and charges, this was put on, as you see, it's the two thousand thirteen list, and it's put on to see if you have any burning desires for staff to specifically look at certain areas, and if not, then at a subsequent meeting, and perhaps it'll be the January seventh meeting, we will be bringing forward a list of department head recommendations to either change or not change. So we would be willing to take that input today if you have it, or we can take it over the next couple of weeks, as you formulate it.
On cemetery, we had made some minor changes last year. Is that working now, or do those need to be reviewed again? Because I believe there were some rate changes last year, for, for this period.
For twenty thirteen.
Yeah, and so I guess it would just be a matter of, were those, were the changes adequate, or, you know, is, is it enough, is it too much? Where does that fall? So just kind of review it, rather than just letting it ride and make sure we're in the right spot on that.
I had tried to set up a meeting, or suggested a meeting with Bill and the two funeral directors here in town, and I think they probably have the best information to give back to that before we do the budget, so.
And the gentleman that does the work, too.
Sure.
It's still the same person.
Along with city staff.
Yeah.
And then some of these might be reviewed with an appropriate staff also, right? I mean, is outside of maybe this, your staff reports to you, I mean, a committee, I should say, some of these would be?
Some would go to committee, absolutely, John. Others are all where we have already asked all the department heads, so that, the party that's involved with that department itself, to make recommendations first. So this is not orchestrated just by admin staff, this is right with each department. And we're starting to get feedback from some of them, so. But again, I didn't know if you thought any of, this is a pretty comprehensive list, so if you had any desire to dive into a certain area, we can do that then with the staff in that area. Otherwise, we'll do our normal review of one department after the other and make sure that what we're recommending on January seventh is, is what the staff feels, okay? So unless you have input, that's really all I have on that, because that is the old list that we've been operating under for a little over eleven months, so. And with that, I guess I'd like to turn it over to Ron and Chris Swanson. Chris Swanson is the engineer for Bolton and Mink, and I believe the sheet, your sheet has already been passed out to the council?
Yeah.
So I'll turn it over to Chris.
Mayor, council, thank you. I handed out a little sheet with an update on the wastewater improvements project for you guys. I guess I'd start with saying that, that overall, the project is about fifty percent complete. We have two contractors that are working on it, Vanderpole excavation, Rice Lake construction. Rice Lake is in charge of the mechanical treatment plant, the splitter building and the improvements at the existing wastewater treatment plant, the new wastewater treatment plant out west of town, and then also the lift station down near Dean Foods. They're, they're making good progress. They're, we're about eight months, seven and a half months into a twelve-month construction schedule, so if you do the math, they're, they've got a little catching up to do, but as of right now, they are still believe that they can make the schedule of April first start-up date for that new facility. The update there goes through a number of the specifics regarding operations building, where much of the equipment is housed out at the new site, aeration basins, clarifiers, control structures, a number of the pieces. I'll, I'll let you guys read that, and if there's any specific questions regarding those items, I'd be happy to answer that for the council regarding Rice Lake's work.
You said that they thought they could make it. What, what do you think?
I think it'll be very close to April first.
April first is still a reasonable, reasonable finish date.
Yeah. It will, it, you know, it's not gonna be March twenty-fifth.
It'll be April first. It'll be really close, no different than any other construction project. It'll just depend on potentially some issues right at that very last week or two of getting things done.
They're putting, what I, basically what I'm seeing from Rice Lake Construction is they brought up more plumbers onto the job site. They've done a nice job of evaluating where they're at. They've recognized that the electrician is a little bit behind and are asking their subcontractor to bring on more people. They got additional plumbers that they plan to bring on in the first of the year, and, and so they're, they're tracking a very detailed scheduling and a fairly sophisticated contractor in knowing where they're at in the process and trying to make adjustments to meet that date. They understand that the industries, Dean Foods and Wells Enterprises are counting on this facility and, and that that's part of the payback to the city of bringing in that revenue from those entities as well to pay for these improvements, and, and so they've, are trying to be very committed to, to meeting that date for the city of La Mar's.
Is weather still a huge factor?
For Rice Lake, we're, the update with Vanderpole's gonna be a little different. I'm gonna speak to Rice Lake. Rice Lake is primarily now indoors. They've got the majority of, of the concrete completed. They have only a little bit left. The big excavation that they have remaining is down by Dean Foods, if, if you've seen that pile of, pile of dirt down there and, and those lift stations. That's the last thing that they have to do that's in the ground. Otherwise, their big push now is in a building that's got a roof on it and heated, so they're able to work all winter long with tenting and temporary heat and stuff in other basins as well. So weather isn't as huge a factor for them at this point. It's getting all the subcontractors coordinated and not, you know, tripping over each other. A lot of electricians, plumbers, HVAC, and other entities working all in the same area.
About Vanderpole?
Vanderpole, they've got two contracts. They're doing the forced main work and the, and the biosolids lagoon work. The forced main work, they're continuing to progress on, they've, they've had some weather issues, but they're proceeding with the work and intend on completing the forced main work over this winter, and I believe that is also doable if they stay committed to it and commit the resources that they need to do that. The biosolids lagoon, they completed the earth work, they got the bentonite liner down, but they, they're, they're unable to complete the concrete work on that. They have requested time extension. We're pending some details on what that, the time extension is for, whether it's justified or not, and we are gonna work with Scott and Ron regarding that extension request. They basically have said that they will not be able to complete the biosolids lagoon in time. That does not mean that the project won't be able to start up. It'll mean that we'll have to make some adjustments and potentially do some temporary biosolids hauling and other things as we start up the new facility, as Vanderpole completes that, and that's one of my recommendations to the city is working with Vanderpole to make them responsible for those extras that are needed, because that lagoon wasn't completed this summer.
Any other questions for Chris or Ron?
Just a couple of comments on that last part. There is a process, Chris stated it, but I wanna emphasize it, there is a process by which we can still turn on the new plant and run it the way we need to in order to accommodate our industry, handling the biosolids in a different fashion if the lagoon isn't ready. So there is, there is a means and method to handle that, and it's, it's reasonable.
Yeah, it's, it's not over the onerous, and, and with the start of the new facility, I mean, the goal is to obviously get it online for the industries. That also starts then the, the revenue for the city to pay for the improvements.
How much more time do they think they need at this point?
You know, I'm thinking probably ten to twelve weeks, but it's weather-dependent. They're, they're looking for that spring weather in order to do some concrete work. It's a twelve-million-gallon lagoon that they need to line with concrete, and so they feel that it'd be too difficult to do that construction in the winter.
Sure.
It, it really comes down to an economic decision, I believe, by that contractor, and so with that, we need to look out for the city's best interest, and ultimately, because we're building a lot of this for the industry, their interests as well, and working closely with everybody involved.
And then the sub A under number one, under the mechanical treatment plant, it's stated there that the access road is constructed, it is open, the utilities are in. I think I've been reporting on that, so it is, he says all utilities, so it's technically correct, but I just want you guys to realize that the road is there and functional, the natural gas is in and functional, the electricity has been brought in and it is functional, although up at the treatment plant, I guess, some of the electrical contractors need to hook it up yet, if I understood it right.
You are correct.
So natural gas, electricity, and water are all to the site and functional. That's what I just want you to realize.
So is Bowman and Mink there every couple of weeks? Are you there talking to them more often than that?
I, I have an engineer who's on-site all the time.
Okay.
Everyday, working with the contractors and stuff.
Okay.
You know, our, our scope of work is, we call it construction observation, where they're working with contractor, some of the scheduling and stuff, and so that, you know, that, that falls to the contractor to get these things done and schedule that work and, and meet these schedules.
Yeah, because the council voted to approve the contracts based upon it all working April first at that price, knowing that if, it didn't matter to us when you poured cement, as long as you got cement in by that date.
And I would say I'm very much with the council, the minimum-
Okay, I just, you know, and I, I knew you knew that, but I just wanted to emphasize that, I guess, is that we assumed that was gonna happen, because that's what we worded on a couple of contracts for minimum payments on monthly basis from two major industries, and I assume that they're gonna be able to utilize it at that point. So if there's a cost borne by somebody, it shouldn't be the citizens or the city or the businesses, it should be borne by the contractors. I mean, it's a, you know, we're spending over a million dollars a month out there. Somebody can figure out how to get it done.
Yep.
I think, maybe I'm being too bold that way, but that's what we're gonna do.
Well said.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, council.
Thank you. Okay, Scott, do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things, Mayor. First one I wanna talk about is a fire truck. We have the need to purchase a new fire engine. That is not a small purchase, it's a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar item. Public Safety Committee has met two or three times in the last thirty days. Chief Shippers got us considerable information. Were able to do a trade-in sale- We're able to do a trade-in sale on our existing rescue unit of about 70,000. We can have a demo unit built, which saves about 15,000. We can prepay a couple of items to save another 6,000 or 7,000, but we're still talking about We were going to talk about this at budget time and we will talk about it at budget time, but since it's a large item and Public Safety has met several times on it, I wanted to at least bring it forward so you're aware of it. We do have eighteen departments, we have $7 million worth of equipment, we have 150 vehicles, so we do have a whole package that we have to put together as far as staggering the purchase of vehicles, finding some creative ways to fund the vehicles. So, I'm not asking for any kind of vote today, I just want you to be aware that that is out there and over the next thirty, sixty days, we will be talking about it and Public Safety Committee at this point has made a recommendation that we treat that as a priority item, so I just wanted to bring that forward. I don't know if anyone from.
So, is this adding an additional engine?
We will be getting rid of a rescue unit and adding an engine.
What I'm saying is it's additional piece of firefighting equipment.
Yes, yes. It'll be something used, right. It'll be used for fighting fires.
So, it's an additional fire engine?
Correct.
Plus for one, we're getting rid of a big truck and replacing the big truck.
Right.
So, what is the expected life of this new one?
Expected life, twenty years, minimum.
One for a frontline and another ten at least after that, so you're talking thirty-year piece of equipment.
But it'll be used for its entire life.
Yeah, a large.
Yes.
We won't be trading it after a few years or whatever like that.
We only run into these large pieces of equipment, whatever, ten years might have a piece, we've got another one in ten years, yeah.
Something like that, so.
I think it's important to note that the new apparatus will help in several things as far as getting firefighters to the scene. The one truck that's thirty years old now is not qualified to take firefighters, other than the drivers in cab, to a call and the new one will have an onboard foam system, which I believe is important to the community, given the fact that we have full trains of ethanol passing through currently.
So, we're gaining additional flexibility.
Absolutely.
One thing we looked at, just so you guys are aware, when we were able to get the trailer that I brought to the council meeting a couple of years ago, we were able to put all our hazmat equipment in there and confined space equipment. All that, that equipment used to be on this rescue truck. So, basically, when we looked at our fleet and we have an engine that's almost thirty years old, another one that's twenty years old, ISO, NFPA and all the things we try to follow say that after twenty years, we should be moving a vehicle, not from frontline status, but to more of a reserve status. So, we have two that are falling into that category now, one that's thirty years old, one that's twenty. So, what we looked at is trading in that twenty-year-old truck would have got us about 5,800 bucks. The twenty-nine-year-old truck's really worth, I mean, you get more scrapping it more than anything. So, what we want to do is take that twenty-nine-year-old truck and not use it as a fire city pumper, so to speak anymore, and use it for grass fires and things like that. It pumps and rolls, which a lot of trucks don't do, so you can drive along and spray water, you don't have to stop, get out, put it in pump gear and all that. This other engine that's twenty years old, that's due to be replaced or not be frontline status then, we'd use it as a reserve, it would be on the south end, it's got the right cab, as John said, that we can still carry six firefighters in it, because everybody has to be in the side of door now with a seatbelt on and not riding on the tailboards like you saw in the olden days or sitting in an open cab. And the rescue truck is worth more money than these engines once they're twenty, thirty years old. And we're not utilizing that rescue truck as we did fifteen years ago when we bought it, due to having this trailer that we got through a grant. So, we were able to capture a lot of extra dollars trading in this rescue truck towards this huge dollar purchase of another fire truck. And so, that's the angle we took with this. So, we will be getting rid of a big rescue truck and moving the equipment from the rescue truck onto one of our current fire engines, which is the jaws of life and some stuff like that. To make us more efficient, John, as you said, and give us more options, and this new truck will be more of a one-stop-shop type truck that will be able to do all facets of firefighting. So, if it's the only truck that shows up for the first fifteen minutes, it can handle most anything it goes to, whether it's the new train stuff, we're getting a lot more ethanol and oil trains coming through, if it's the only one that can get up into a cul-de-sac or something like that, it will be able to take care of the situation. So, that's kind of what we're looking at, but we're trying to save money, you know, and these things aren't cheap and they're not going to get any cheaper and, you know, prices keep going up. A couple of years ago with the emission standards in the EPA with the diesel and Adnirea, that jumped at 30, 40,000 in costs since 2009 alone, so. But it will be here for thirty years, so.
And again, we are not asking to commit anything today.
No.
We have talked to the companies, they are willing to hold their prices till March. The trade-in slash sale is still valid till March, so we have time to discuss it and look at the whole package, but we just wanted to make you aware of it.
And the other place I was coming from, it is not going to require the need for additional fire station.
No, no, and actually, this helps on a staffing thing because this type of apparatus allows you to do more with less people. Thank you.
I have to say that Dave makes, Dave makes the same comments about fire equipment as Wayne used to make.
Mention that.
About fire equipment. And when Wayne came up here and he was asking for half a million or 300 or a billion one time, we were still very hesitant because those numbers are so big and we still have the same hesitancy with a 600,000 number because the number is so big. But we're really glad, at least this council person is, that you're in charge of our fire department and making it safe and good for the citizens, because that's one of the things the state of Iowa says we're supposed to do, is serve and protect with our property tax dollars and that's what we do really well.
And we showed that with, you know, being able to lower ISO score and we took that old truck and we put some money in it to get us to where we're at and it worked real well and this is just going to provide that for the future and allow us to keep our fleet as best we can for the citizens and our volunteers that are using it. And that's the most important thing to me is the safety of our people, bar none, so thanks.
Dave doesn't talk quite as long as Wayne did.
No, Wayne just talked until he got enough votes and then he got quiet, but he kept going.
I've got a couple of, they sent out a tentative budget schedule, I think you've all gotten that. I've heard back from two or three of the meetings all work. Again, we're going to proceed with that schedule. If you find out something doesn't work, let me know and we'll try to shuffle the time of the day, so. That went out to all the department heads and mayor and council, so we'll proceed.
Bill, could you email or just a reminder when those effective meetings come up?
As we come up.
Yeah, that'd be good. About a day or two ahead.
Yep, we'll do that. The only other thing I wanted to mention is Scott and I had a closeout session with FEMA a week or so ago. We've dealt with probably fifteen different people with FEMA, state level and federal level. What we have finally came across or came upon is about 168,000 worth of flood-related claims. Just wanted to give you that number. That has been through the federal review process at about three levels, it's still got one more level at the federal to get reviewed and then at the state level, they've reviewed it at one level, it's got one more level at the state, but that's kind of what the number is, we're looking at about 168,000. If that gets finalized, federal FEMA will be about 75% of that, state will be about 10% and we will continue to absorb the 15%, just to let you know where we're at on the FEMA situation. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Oh, is that federal again? How much?
Seventy-five percent.
And the state was what?
Ten percent.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Bill.
Yep.
At this time, that ends our council meeting.